This meeting is a public session of the Council Rock Board of School Directors. This meeting is being recorded by the Council Rock School District and may be recorded by members of the audience. We've got the Council Rock High School North Rhythm of Rock here with Mr. Williams. Who's going to lead us into place? Do we have somebody?
Mr. Noah Morris.
Noah, floor is yours.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the broad river we watched, where so gallants we streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free? And the home of the great, home of the brave?
This group is Rhythm of the Rock. Rhythm of the Rock is Council Rock North's pop acapella group and has been around now a few years. You may have heard that we have a large event coming up, not just for Rhythm of the Rock, but nine other groups, ten other groups that are coming to our school to sing pop acapella at Acapella at the Rock. That is March 12th and we're very, very excited about it. We had it sold out in town last year and I can tell you that we have less than 200 tickets remaining for this year already and we're still about a little less than a month out. So I think that's pretty incredible. So we're really proud of this group and we're going to sing for you a number called Stitches and it features Rachel, Rachel Pomerantz, Noah Morris, Alex Miller, and Georgia Poseski on vocal percussion, alright?
(singing)
I thought that I'd been heard before, but no one's ever let me play this song. You were worth a lot deeper than I know. Now I'm here somewhere to bring me that delight. Got a feeling that I'm going under, but I know that I'll make it out alive if I quit calling you my lover. You are, you are. (singing) Need a little thread, gotta get you out of my head. Need a little thread, gotta wind up dead.
Need a little thread, gotta get you out of my head. Need a little thread, gotta wind up dead.
Need a little thread, gotta get you out of my head. Need a little thread, gotta wind up dead. Need a little thread, gotta get you out of my head. You watch me bleed until I bleed free. I see you running, running from the ground. And now I'm without your kisses. I'm dripping over myself. I ain't gonna beg and you to go now. And now I'm without your kisses. I'm without your kisses. I'll be needing stitches. I'm without your kisses. I'll be needing stitches. I'm without your kisses. I'll be needing stitches.
Alright, a standing ovation and a very well deserved one at that. CR North, thank you so very much. And I'm going to ask you a couple of things here. First and foremost, please stay, stay put if you don't mind. And I know that's asking a lot because some of you I know are exhausted because you have been on a trip, many of you have, to Scotland and to England over the past few days, singing your hearts out and delighting audiences over there for the past few days. And I had a chance to go onto your Facebook site and check out some of that action. And for those of you out there who have not had that chance yet, you're missing out. You should absolutely go on there and do just that. So thank you for that work. Hang in there and March 12th, right? Is that our date?
Yeah.
Alright, cannot wait that event, Acapella at the Rock. It is front and center on our homepage of our website, so please make sure that you check that out. And I cannot wait to be there. I hoped to even be able to come up last year, as a matter of fact, from, from quite a distance away, was unable to do so, but this year I wouldn't miss it for the world. So I cannot wait to be a part of that and, and see you all in action. So we do have a special presentation in just a couple of minutes. Hang in there while we go through a roll call and then we will get to that presentation. CR North Choir, thank you so much again.
Madam Secretary, my roll call, please.
Dr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Grubb?
Present.
Mrs. McKessy?
Here.
Mr. Tate?
Here.
Mrs. Thomas?
Here.
Dr. Thorwart?
Here.
Mr. Block?
Here.
Mr. Bylick?
Here.
Mrs. Brooks?
Here.
Dr. Frazer, Superintendent's report, please.
Okay, thank you very much. So this, this very special presentation is actually the first of two here this evening. I'd like to welcome to the podium, Mr. Joseph Zaffron. Mr. Zaffron is from the Bucks County Tour of Honor and Mr. Zaffron is here to talk just a bit about a very special performance that was given by, by, by part of this group, the CR North Voice Music Group, back on October 5th. So, Mr. Zaffron, welcome. Thank you so much for being here and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Frazer. Members of the board, Mr. President, I'm from the Bucks County Recorder's Office and I'm here on behalf of Bucks County Commissioners and myself to present a presentation to the Bucks County Council Rock North Choir. For two years now, we've been having a trip down to Washington DC, which was known as Bucks County Honor Flight. We have taken veterans from Bucks County, WWII veterans and Korean veterans down to see their memorials. And when we come home, we have a big extravaganza down there at Parks Casino. So what we wanted to do is, we have a lot of team members that we call them, then Council Rock North Choir was one of our members and we wanted to just tonight, we wanted to make a presentation to the choir, the school district, and thank them on behalf of the county for their participation in our trip. And so that's what I want to do, is present you with this plaque, sir.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate your help.
Thank you.
Bucks County Honor Flight is now known as Bucks County Tour of Honor. We have our trip planned for this year, which is September the 26th, which we will again be taking this year six busloads of veterans down to Washington DC to see their memorials again. So hopefully we can count on the Council Rock North Choir and I thank you personally right here for your service and everything to us and hopefully we can count on you again this year. We do have something special, but we ain't going to bring that up tonight. I already spoke to the superintendent about it, but we'll see what we can do about that. So again, thank you very much for your help and everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Williams. Much appreciated. And also this evening, we have another very special presentation. This one, an impressive donation that has recently been made to CREF, or Council Rock Education Foundation. Accepting this evening's contribution on behalf of CREF is our Executive Director, Ms. Gawa Costa. Ms. Costa, welcome to the podium. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the Board of Directors from the Council Rock Education Foundation, we want to say thank you very much to Mr. Chuck Roundenbush from Waste Management for his very generous donation and support to innovative programs. These are the milestones that we like to celebrate with you and with the community and thank you for your contribution.
It's a distinct pleasure to present this to the Education Foundation. I'm also a member of that board, so it's a double pleasure and we look at this as an investment in the youth of the area because every young person in Council Rock and every other school district is a potential employee someday. So we want to start them early, get them well educated, and then hopefully we can hire a lot of them, put them to work. We have 800 employees of Waste Management who live in Bucks County. So hopefully we'd like to add to that someday, but again, it's our pleasure to present this to the foundation and to the school district.
Well, we certainly thank you. On behalf of the students and the teachers of, of this fine school district, we are most appreciative. Thank you.
And if we can tell you, the check is worth $5,000. There you go.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Frazer. And Ms. McCarthy, see some fine young folks in front of us tonight? I think, I think at some point it might be cool if they did it from up here. We want to thank them.
About that, guys and gals.
Thank you out loud.
So, for a second dose of Council Rock North, I'd like to introduce our SAB members, Student Advisory Board members, Jake Cohen and Finn Thompson, Hadley Grunman, and Samantha Rank. And we're especially happy to have joining us this evening Gavin Stroop from Sloan School. Kristen Fron from MBIT is not able to be here this evening. So, take it away.
Good evening. It is hard to believe it is already the third marking period and I, alongside my fellow senior classmates, am in the process of choosing where I will spend the next four years. The senior class is in the process of planning our trip to Disney as well as finalizing details for prom. Last month, SEB held the annual talent show. The theme was Saturday Night Live and the night was filled with singing, dancing, and even some comedy. Overall, the event was, was a success and helped to raise over $2,000. Additionally, SEB is in the process of planning the ninth annual Rockathon. It will be held on March 11th and 12th in the charity is Jackson's Lab. SEB representatives are currently soliciting for two donations for the overnight portion of the event. Aside from Rockathon, SEB is planning Mr. CRN, a beauty pageant for senior boys. This year's theme is the Olympics and as the super chair, I am very excited to review the applications and see which senior boy will be the next Mr. CRN. Lastly, the freshman class, along with Josie Lee, are sponsoring a book drive for children's books for St. Chris's Hospital. The books are being collected in North's lobby now through February 24th. This concludes my presentation. Thank you and I will see you next meeting. Here sadly.
Hello, all. I hope you had a nice long weekend. It was a nice surprise to have a two-hour delay on Tuesday because as a high school student, you can never have too much sleep. All of the winter sports have just ended or are finishing their seasons soon. This past Saturday was a big day for North Athletics. Council Rock North's women's swim team won their ninth consecutive Suburban One League title after finishing their regular season with a 6-0 conference record. The men's swim team also had their SOL Conference Championships this past weekend and finished three points ahead of William Tennant to take third place at the meet. The women's basketball team, seeded 28th, upset the fifth seeded team, Boyerstown, in the first round of the District One Playoffs, winning the game 40 to 27. Becca Margolis, a sophomore from North, led the team, scoring 18 points, while freshman Dana Bandurk and senior Sam Safer played a tremendous role defensively. Unfortunately, their season came to an end yesterday after a tough loss to Downingtown East. This morning, we had our athletic signing ceremony where 12 of our very own athletes were recognized for their commitments to play a sport in college. In theater news, Stock and Buskin is currently rehearsing for Oscar Wilde's The Importance of Being Earnest, which is set to run March 3rd through 5th and doors open at 7:30. So make sure to come out and support the club as it is a performance you won't want to miss. They have also decided on their musical for this year, which will be Big Fish by John August and will be on stage towards the end of April. Finally, the junior class has begun preparations for junior prom. The event will take place April 1st at the Princeton Hyatt. The class officers recently toured the location and have been meeting with DJs. The students are waiting with anticipation to learn what this year's theme will be, a task that the officers have not taken lightly. Thank you for your time. Here's Finn Thompson.
Hello. A lot has happened since the last time we came here, even with the gracious delays that a certain school board has been granting us. Academically, the first semester, the first semester ended last month with a stream of midterms and year-long courses and finals and semesters courses. New semester courses have begun and it feels good to be on the home stretch in terms of the school year. Students have been meeting with the counselors for the past couple of weeks, selecting not only their required courses for next year, but also their electives. Course selection was kicked off with a very successful electives assembly that allowed teacher representatives from each area of electives to pitch their classes to students. The assembly allowed for students like me to hear about a variety of different courses that we didn't even know were offered and made selecting next year's classes much easier. Students are also preparing for the next SAT testing date on March 5th and a remake SAT test this Saturday. On March 4th, an assembly about cyberbullying will take place during social studies classes for 9th and 10th graders. Speaking of sophomores, recently the sophomore class had a, held a school supplies drive for Cradles to Crayons, a Philadelphia-based charity that donates supplies to underprivileged kids to support their education. Students made donations in their homerooms and lots of bags of supplies were donated. In music, Council Rock North's choir program got back from its week-long trip to England and Scotland this week. The choir performed 10 songs in Edinburgh, Loch Lomond, York, York, Ripon, Kensington, and a high school in Scotland. Many students said that their favorite part of the trip was getting to sing Loch Lomond on the loch itself. Between performances, students went sightseeing in the towns that they had stayed at and had the experience of a lifetime, meeting new people and singing for the whole week. They returned Monday night on an eight-hour flight and came back to school the next day. I'm sure that they're all hard at work making up the week-long list of assignments that they missed, which I do next Tuesday. Thank you and here's Gavin.
Good evening. My name is Gavin Stroop and I am here on behalf of the Theodore A. Sloan School. I'm a senior who's homeschooled at Council Rock North. I am here tonight to inform you of some of the activities and other exciting things that have been going on this year at Sloan. At the beginning of the year, we participated in the MAPS testing, which is an assignment test in reading, math, and language arts to gauge student performance in those three categories. Also, like other schools, we took the Keystone Exams in literature, biology, and algebra. As a school, we participated in a six-week program and presentation called Marijuana Interrupted, which was presented by the Council of Southeastern Pennsylvania Incorporated. This teenager showed the effects of marijuana on their mental, physical, and their health. All grade levels at the Sloan School completed the district, a district assignment about honesty. And this assignment, all students had to research different cases and write an essay about when telling the truth is a positive and when it may not be. On Martin Luther King Junior Day, a group of students and teachers from the school participated in charity work at the Children's Home and Community Center located in Doylestown, while at the center, the students delivered baby care products to those in need. This was, this activity was to teach the Sloan students about the great work men like Martin Luther King Junior did and showing that we as students can also do something to help those who are less fortunate than we are. Although the Sloan School may be small and lack the staff size that North and South have, we also participate in a wide range of electives. Some of the electives are personal finance, intro to psychology, ancient mythology, world mythology, and computer science. In addition, every day we participate, in addition, every other day, we participate in gym at North. Over the last few quarters, we have done multiple sports, including badminton, volleyball, and basketball, and occasionally on Fridays, we play dodgeball. Going to the gym every other day allows the students to participate in physical activities while hanging out with other class members. This helps the students of our two schools to get to know each other and grow closer together over the school year. In addition to helping students achieve academic success, the Sloan School also helps students achieve emotional well-being. The teachers at the school are the hardest workers I have seen. The teachers do whatever they can to help us grow as people. I am so happy to know that if I need any help, any of those teachers would gladly be there to help, to be there to help me through it. So thank you, Ms. Marks, Mr. Range, Ms. Josie, Mr. Rose, Mr. Colachi, and Mr. Donnelly for helping the students of the Sloan School. One of the unique and impactful programs is a group therapy class. There are five group periods, group periods during the day run by Kevin Donnelly, where he challenges students to push themselves to conquer their anxiety issues. He also pushes kids to talk about their issues like depression, bipolar disorder, and other disorders that some of my fellow students face. One of the key parts of this class is that kids don't talk about their issues in front of just a therapist, but in front of the other students who go through similar problems. This allows kids like me to be able to grow and conquer our problems around others who struggle with similar issues. It also allows us to see how other teenagers struggle and have us teach and learn from each other so that we can grow as people. I believe I can speak for all the students at the Sloan School that Kevin Donnelly has done a wonderful job helping all of us conquer our issues and we are glad that the Sloan School offers this group therapy class. Another activity that many of the students appreciate and love is the Norwestern Reader's Canine Partners in Education. We have a therapy dog come in once a week and the dog helps students build student motivation, enhance focus, and increase task persistence. The presence of the dog, Rory, offers emotional support in a stress-free environment to try and improve academic achievements, student self-esteem, and confidence. The school not only teaches us through core classes, electives, and charity work, we also participate in field trips that help us teach about where our country has come from and where we are today. The first field trip we have took this, that, the first field trip we took this year was to the Constitution Center in Philadelphia. While there, we spent the trip learning about the, how the Constitution was formed and also learning about what the Constitution is and how it helped create the democracy we have today. On September 11th, we went to the Garden of Reflection. While students at the Sloan School were too young to remember that day, we have seen the videos and have heard the stories from our parents. The Garden of Reflection allowed us to see all the names of those who died and those from our areas who were killed in the terrorist attacks. From conversations I have, I have had with other students, this field trip made us think about how our country and the world was affected and changed by 9/11. In class at Sloan, we participate in academic activities, but outside of the classroom, we participate in fun activities that reinforce what we learn in class and help build lifelong skills. Our building which, which the Sloan School is in is also shared with the Achieve Program. Every day, we have peer mentoring with the Achieve kids. We go over and hang out with them and we also try to help and guide them with their everyday activities. I think this program is such a wonderful thing because I have truly been touched by all of the Achieve kids and it's been such a pleasure being able to spend so much time with these amazing children. Also, on the second Monday of each month, we go to Sale House. It is an opportunity for students to work in a collaborative setting. Groups are responsible for creating menu, following a budget, shopping for groceries, preparing and cooking for food, and cleaning up afterwards. Groups rotate each month so that all students have an opportunity to participate in all the different activities. My personal activity, my personal favorite activity we did was the mock trial. This was a way to teach students how a case in court works. Students participate as lawyers, jury members, witnesses, and more. The reason this is my favorite is because I was a prosecutor and won. Well, not only that, this activity taught us students how the criminal justice system works and how to be a jury member, since we will all likely be one at some point in our lives. The first half of the Sloan School year at, the first half of Sloan School year has been very successful and we hope to continue this success till the end of the year. We hope to achieve as much as possible in the academic setting of the school while also participating in fun activities outside of the classroom. Thank you for your time and interest in the students of Theodore A. Sloan School. Here's Jake Cohen.
Good afternoon. I'm happy to be back here in the new year and I hope everyone is doing well. A lot more has happened at Council Rock North in my 9th grade class and in our various clubs and extracurricular activities. First of all, many freshmen participated in a food drive at our school for Martin Luther King Day. This took place in the second full week of January. Many students brought canned goods which were donated to the Wrightstown and Pendell Food Counties. This was a success as many people donated and many freshmen helped. Secondly, the Club SAD, or Students Against Distracted Decisions, held their Project Purple basketball games on January 26th. Project Purple, also called the Heron Project, is a nonprofit organization that was established by a former basketball player, which helps individuals and families to struggle with substance, substance abuse, and addiction. It advocates for strong decision-making skills by encouraging teens to speak up against this substance abuse. This message was definitely put out as that was a success. The basketball games were against the chaminé and special Project Purple t-shirts were handed out to the first 75 people who came. On top of that, SAD is also preparing for Chris Heron, the founder of the Project Purple, to come speak to all the students here at North on March 16th. This will take place during Period Three of that day in the gym. SAD is currently working on purple decorations to match the theme of the event and they ordered even more t-shirts to distribute when the time comes. SAD's intention is to spread out Mr. Heron's message to everyone at our school and I am positive that SAD will do just that, if not more. In addition, the marching band has been preparing for its annual spring concert since December. In January, on top of preparing for upcoming performances, students volunteered to help the concert band, which is with its small ensemble concert. Lastly, on Friday, February 12th, the marching band performed at the Deep Smarts in service for faculty members. Also, the school paper, The Indian Night, released its second issue in mid-December. It is online and it is in print on the Indian Night website, which is theindianight.weebly.com. In January, editors had a meeting to plan for their third issue, which should come out by the end of this month. These clubs in the class of 2019 have all been moving along successfully as our 2015-16 school year has been flying by. I can't wait to report back to you all as we move into the last marking period in April. Thank you.
Well done, ladies and gentlemen. Fantastic as usual.
Excellent. Nice job. Things are going well at North, huh?
Yeah.
till the end of the year. We hope to achieve as much as possible in the academic setting of the school while also participating in fun activities outside of the classroom. Thank you for your time and interest in the students of Theodore A. Sloan School. Here's Jake Coen.
Good afternoon. I'm happy to be back here in the new year, and I hope everyone is doing well. A lot more has happened at Council Rock North in my 9th grade class and in our various clubs and extracurricular activities. First of all, many freshmen participated in a food drive at our school for Martin Luther King Day. This took place in the second full week of January. Many students brought canned goods which were donated to the Wrightstown and Pendell Food Counties. This was a success, as many people donated and many freshmen helped. Secondly, the Club SAD, or Students Against Distracted Decisions, held their Project Purple basketball games on January 26th. Project Purple, also called the Heron Project, is a nonprofit organization that was established by a former basketball player, which helps individuals and families that struggle with substance abuse and addiction. It advocates for strong decision-making skills by encouraging teens to speak up against this substance abuse. This message was definitely put out, as that was a success. The basketball games were against the Chaminys, and special Project Purple t-shirts were handed out to the first 75 people who came. On top of that, SAD is also preparing for Chris Heron, the founder of the Project Purple, to come speak to all the students here at North on March 16th. This will take place during Period 3 of that day in the gym. SAD is currently working on purple decorations to match the theme of the event, and they ordered even more t-shirts to distribute when the time comes. SAD's intention is to spread out Mr. Heron's message to everyone at our school, and I am positive that SAD will do just that, if not more. In addition, the marching band has been preparing for its annual spring concert since December. In January, on top of preparing for upcoming performances, students volunteered to help the concert band with its small ensemble concert. Lastly, on Friday, February 12th, the marching band performed at the Deep Smarts in-service for faculty members. Also, the school paper, The Indian Night, released its second issue in mid-December. It is online and it is in print on the Indian Night website, which is theindianight weebly.com. In January, editors had a meeting to plan for their third issue, which should come out by the end of this month. These clubs in the class of 2019 have all been moving along successfully as our 2015-16 school year has been flying by. I can't wait to report back to you all as we move into the last marking period in April. Thank you.
Well done, ladies and gentlemen. Fantastic as usual.
Excellent. Nice job. Things are going well at North, huh? Yes, they are, especially those delays. You guys like those delays, don't you? Talk about sleeping in. Why don't I get to sleep in on those days? I don't know.
I'm going to share a little secret. They said they like delays more than days off. Especially the senior in the group.
All right. Good to know. I'll keep that in mind. Thank you all so much. Very much appreciated.
All right. We'll move to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board. We would ask that you limit your comments to no longer than three minutes. Please consider the fact that there may be young children in the audience or watching this broadcast live on CR TV when speaking. It's our goal to maintain respectful environments so that members of our community have an equal opportunity to address the board without interruption. While the board welcomes your ideas and will consider them in deliberating an issue, we may not respond directly to your comments or questions. Do not have anybody on the list, but I am sure there will be one. Good evening, Nancy.
Nancy Carroll, Newtown Borough. As I hold my agenda in my hand, there are still not numbers on what you're voting on. So, the board is looking at a different agenda than the public is. If there's a good reason why we can't have those numbers, I'd like somebody to announce it, maybe at the end of the meeting. I also noticed that for the second meeting in the world, we have a very light agenda, despite the fact that we have a lot of important discussions to have in this district that are going to take a long time. We're about to spend or give out bids for $110 million for the middle schools, and we still don't know who's going to go to what school, and then to which subsequent high school. And I think that those things will need to be discussed by the board, and if you're going to close Richborough, or you know how that's going to happen, or you're going to have a committee that will be reused. We haven't talked about capital planning in a long time. We haven't talked about redistricting. There's probably a ton of hard budget issues that should be discussed. And when you have these meetings that are light, you don't need to lengthen them by telling everything that's going to happen in the school district in the next week or two weeks to the meeting. I've made many suggestions on how you can improve the cable TV, and that's one thing you can do. Rather than have a board member say, "This is coming up and that's coming up," let these poor people who have worked since early this morning go home, and when the meeting's over, put a list of what's going to happen in school district right after the meeting, so that it's up on the TV station. I've also made many suggestions, and I'd like to very much thank North and their teachers for bringing those wonderful voices to this meeting. I really believe if we excerpt these musical productions from the meeting and put them out on the cable TV, you know, every hour on the hour, you'd be doing a service to the community, which is probably an older demographic and would enjoy it very much, as well honor these students and the work that they do. Maybe you don't want to put on continuously the meetings, but there are certain things that would have an interest. And I also would like to suggest that you turn over everything but the meeting to the students, and let them do the content. I'd like to thank Matt Fredrickson for bringing in the Pensbury people who talked about Google classrooms, and we're going to have other presentations. And in order for technology to move forward in Council Rock, we're going to have to spend money. And if you're not going to raise taxes, then you need to think about being efficient in our schools. Thank you.
Nancy, I'll say, first of all, thank you for your commentary. In terms of the agendas themselves, that was left in my hands after the most recent meeting. The couple-week turnaround time that we had since then just hasn't been quite enough for me to be able to completely wrap our heads around that and have any changes made, but rest assured that it is an issue of importance to me, I think to the board, just as it is for you. So, we will indeed be working on that. In terms of more action-oriented agendas coming up, budget season is certainly right around the corner, so munch to Mr. Reinhardt's chagrin, perhaps. We've got a big budget presentation next month, and we are fast and furious heading into that season. So, I think all of the above that you talked about will be coming our way in the very near future. So, again, thank you, and I think that you'll be seeing all that coming your way very soon. Thanks again.
Good evening. Marilyn Scarpa. I am speaking on behalf of the Council Rock Education Foundation, and I would like to announce to the community, if they have not already heard, that our major fundraiser, which is an outstanding night of fun, Monte Carlo Night is coming up, and it is to be held March 11th at The Fuge this year, which is an equally cool place to visit. The atmosphere will be tremendous. It'll have outstanding food, drink, prizes, silent auction items. Some of our silent auction items include trips to Panama and the Grenadines and Antigua. We have signed sports memorabilia and all kinds of things. So, I hope the community will come out and not only have a wonderful night, a Friday night out, but also help benefit the Council Rock Education Foundation. And you can get more information on our website, which is www.creducationfoundation.org, and I hope everyone comes out and makes it a huge success. Thank you.
Any further public comment? You're not getting up, Rick? You sure? All right. We'll move directly to the consent agenda. Dr. Thorwart, please.
Sure. I move to approve the consent agenda. Items A through E as contained in the attachments to the agenda, subject to audit.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Can we, just hold on one second. Is it possible that we pull out the January 7th minutes? I just see something that may be in the show. Can we move this to the next meeting? It looks like there was a vote in there that says that I was a yes, and I think I was a no regarding the PlanCon presentation for Holland and Newtown. So, I'd just like clarification on it, if that's okay.
Yeah, I don't believe there's a problem, is there, Mr. Cox?
No.
There's no time for that.
No, there's not.
Okay. So, we can pull, which agenda is that, Mr. Byler? January 7th. Okay. So, we'll pull that for the next meeting.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm just not sure. I think, yeah, if that's okay.
Okay. So, we'll pull that out.
Do you need me to change the motion, or are we still good here?
No, just if Mr. Thorwart and whoever seconded the motion are in agreement to pull those minutes out.
That's fine. Okay. Yeah. Okay. Are there any other questions? Have a roll call vote, please.
Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Mr. Tate?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Thorwart?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mr. Byler?
Yes, with the exception of Item C, approval of treasurer's report.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Dr. Foster?
Yes, with the exception of Item A, approval of minutes.
Okay. Mr. Grub?
Yes. Okay. Motion passes. Ms. Thomas, if you could please read item number one.
I move to approve the personnel actions as contained in the attachments to this agenda.
Second.
Mr. Tate, are there any questions for Ms. Trioli? A roll call vote, please.
Dr. Thorwart?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mr. Byler?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grub?
Yes.
Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Mr. Tate?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passes. Nine oh. Ms. McKessy, could you please read number two?
I move to approve the 2016-2017 school calendar as contained in the attachment to this agenda.
Second.
Mr. Byler, second. Any questions for Dr. Frazier on the calendar?
I don't have any questions, but I'm wondering if we could just remind the community. I don't know whether Dr. Frazier or Mr. Desco would be better to just speak to the history. I know we have received several emails with regard to people upset that we are starting, beginning school, and bringing kids back before Labor Day. And I know historically, we used to make that an arbitrary decision a number of years ago, looking at every calendar individually. But if you could just go over that one more time in terms of what those dates are, is it the 3rd or the 4th, so that people don't feel that that falls on deaf ears necessarily?
Yes, absolutely, Ms. McKessy. So, that language is actually written at the bottom each year of the calendar that's approved and PDFed as a document on the website. So, what that language would note is that if school begins, or rather, if Labor Day falls on the 5th, 6th, or 7th of September, then the first day of school will be designated in the week before Labor Day. Whereas if it's the 1st, 2nd, 3rd, or 4th, then school will start post-Labor Day. If it's the 5th, 6th, or 7th, then it would be after Labor Day. So, that's the rule of thumb that's used. That's the language that we have on the calendar. That was definitely the most frequent piece of feedback that we received on the calendar this year. That said, there was also one parent, at least one out there, who expressed gratitude that we were, in fact, starting in the draft calendar before Labor Day, and she had some childcare reasons for that being the case. I would speak to a couple pieces. In the sense of the middle of the school year, there were a couple questions that were asked around, so here we are, starting before Labor Day, but yet we take these days off in the middle of the school year, right? So, we just had two of these. We just had last Friday off, six days ago, and then we just had this past Monday off. So, this past Monday was off. It was a federal holiday for President's Day. It's a pretty customary day for schools to have off. Does it mean that you absolutely need to have off? Perhaps not, but it's certainly the norm in public education to have that day off. So, that tends to be our norm in Council Rock as well. And then the Friday before that, you actually heard a reference from one of our North students talking about the Deep Smarts in-service Day. We have in-service days, which are professional development days, training days for our professional staff, and our support staff sprinkled in throughout the school year. Our students go to school for 180 days. Our professional staff have a 189-day contract. So, we have some of those days on the front end of the school year in August before the students start, but the rest of those, then, are sprinkled throughout the course of the school year. And in fact, a trend in American education, and it's not a positive trend, is that we tend to not have enough time for professional development in America relative to other countries when it comes for teacher training and the like. So, some of those days are full days, some of those days are half days. So, when people question, "Well, why do you have a day like last Friday? Isn't that a time that we could recapture and have our students in school and find some of those times throughout the course of the year and thus not need to start before Labor Day?" Please understand that ongoing training of our staff is a critical component to success of our staff, and it's a top priority for us, which is why we have a 189-day contract for our staff as opposed to a 180-day school year for our students. So, it's really for that reason that I think our administrative recommendation is for the board to approve the draft calendar, as it has been out there for the past month. We have, and I want our community to know this, we have received slightly more than 20 emails in response to our call for feedback, and we have read every single one of those and processed every single one of those. As a cabinet, certainly, we have talked about every single one of those. And again, the one theme that has been out there has been the Labor Day issue. So, it's been a longstanding practice in the district to start before Labor Day. If it falls on the 5th, 6th, or 7th, that is the case in the 2016-17 school year, that coupled with the need for us to have effective ongoing professional development for our staff members throughout the school year, it really just seems to make sense. That coupled with, if we would have a winter unlike this one, where we have a number of snow days and we need to start tacking these days on at the end of the school year, then we can real quickly get pretty late into the school year, and we don't need to look much more beyond the past three, four school years to see times when that has happened. And really, in this era of high-stakes testing, even advanced placement testing, regardless of when you start a school year, that testing window is coming. That two-week advanced placement testing window is coming, and whether you start school a week earlier or a week later, you either choose to have that additional week of schooling or choose not to have that additional week of schooling. In our opinion, it's more advantageous to have it than not to have it whenever Labor Day falls sufficiently late as it is this year. So, it's for those reasons that that would be our recommendation to the board. Thank you.
Dr. Thorwart?
Yeah, I've got one more for you, Robert. In light of the fact that, I know we have this rule of thumb for Labor Day, and that's fine, but what we don't have is, we just know school's going to start before Labor Day. In this case, it was the Tuesday. I mean, it was almost a full week before. Can we nail that down? I mean, is that something we could post with the next calendar? School is going to start in 2017 on this day. Just to take that kind of question mark away from parents planning last-minute vacations. I've got a daughter now that's going to go to work, and it matters. It just kind of, this is the day. I know it adds more work, and you know, but...
Well, you know, it's a great question, and it does and it doesn't. There are some school districts, it's not a real common practice, but there are some school districts that will plan their calendars two years out for that very reason. There really isn't a whole lot to stand in our way from doing that, should we be of the mindset to want to do it for that sort of reason.
I was trying to not even nail it down to a whole calendar, just a start date, you know, for a year in advance, so that as parents and people planning daycare, whatever, and actually the facilities providing it, they know.
Right.
That would take, I had nothing but, all the questions I fielded were, "Why so early?" So, and I know we put the rule of thumb, but it's still, there's still a pretty big window on that rule of thumb at the beginning. I'd like to, could we nail it down?
Sure, sure. And Mr. Desco, feel free to speak more to the historical piece to this than what I'm able to, but my assumption is that we've maximized whatever that prior week was leading up to it. So, we're starting this year as per this draft calendar on Monday, August 19th, to maximize that five-day week there.
Well, the teachers are.
August 29th.
I assume that's been consistent. Monday, August 29th, right?
Yes.
It'd be the first day of school.
Correct. So, yeah, I mean, we do try to typically start that full week prior to the holiday when we're beginning in August. I don't think it would be difficult, as Dr. Frazier said, to look a year in advance and see what that start date would be based on...
You could sprinkle your in-service days. I don't want to, you know, force your hand with all that. Just nail down the beginning.
Well, those two are pretty traditional. I mean, they typically land in pretty similar places in a calendar over the course of a year. So, I mean, the calendar that you see in any given year is not significantly different, other than several holidays and where they may fall and whether they, you know, are on school days or not. So, other than that, it's not a very difficult process.
Would it be hard if we said, "Okay, we're going to start the Wednesday before Labor Day when we start before Labor Day"?
It wouldn't be hard. The only caution I would say is if, depending on where Labor Day falls and how many other holidays we have in that particular school year, some days, we're taking more school days off because of where holidays fall. It could be a much longer winter break, several days in September or October that another year's may fall on a weekend. So, the only dilemma that you may face with that is it could still push that end date in June back much later.
I just think it accomplishes your goal in an easier fashion, if people know it's the Wednesday before Labor Day or it's the Wednesday after Labor Day.
When you count out the days, though, you could run into a situation where by starting on Wednesday, people... starting on Wednesday, and you do the math, it counts out that the last day of school would be on Monday, and that would be like silly, because you'd be thinking along starting on Tuesday and not, you know...
This year is different than some other years. There, you have to understand, over the years, we've adopted a few things that we now do. We now do have a week, which is the, the spring break. We actually have a week that the students are out of school. That's, that wasn't always that way. So we did that in answer to the community wanting to have a week to give the children a break. This year, for the coming school year, we, we have the unfortunate coincidence that the three Jewish holidays, the two Jewish holidays, which take three days, fall, Monday, Tuesday, and then the next Wednesday. That's unfortunate happenstance, and those are floating holidays. They, they float by lunar calendar. The other thing which we have to look at too, which is the interplay of when Christmas is and when the New Year's is. Again, this is a full week that it's, that's given off here. It, it just, where the interplay of these days are. I, I think the simplest solution is probably the easiest, which is plan one or two years ahead, and then if, as you look at it and adjust and bring in the different factors, it's out there sooner. That's the easiest way. Because the rules of thumb, we're still going to get into dispute about, well, I didn't think it would be that way, and I took the last week in August at the beach. If we told them, don't do that in 2017, because it starts, there's, there's no discussion. It's, it's easily accommodated.
Or if you just said it's going to be Monday, and then it ends up being Tuesday, you know, but at least it's blocked off, and you know not to take that week.
Two weeks ahead is a great idea. I think that's...
Two years, two years ahead.
Yeah.
Two years ahead, yeah.
I think it's doable, yeah. I, I, I would, I would, my, my gut feeling is I would struggle with a Wednesday start only, only because the, the first week, and, and our teachers know that, I see some of you sitting out there in the audience, that, that, that first week is all about routines, right? It's all about just getting the lay of the land and setting norms and conditions and the culture of the classroom, and, and you just sort of need some consistency of time to do that. So to go into that with only three days, I think, would be a challenge that you set up for yourselves right off the bat. I think potentially, when we have this situation in the future, a viable question could, could possibly be taking a look at that Friday leading into, into Labor Day weekend, that some people would, would appreciate that time away or the potential to have that time away from family. So at least if you start on Monday, you get that four-day week.
Do you have time away with family or time away from family?
To each their own, Mr. Grub, to each their own.
There were years past, based on how other holidays felt, that, that the school year started Monday through Thursday.
Monday through Thursday, right. And so I, I see that as, as, as something that's worthy certainly of conversation and consideration, but, but that, that notion still starts on a Monday, right? That doesn't satisfy everyone. But for the sake of setting teachers up for success in that first week up for success...
I'm, I'm happy to vote for two years, you know, a two-year lead, and just, then it's out there, and, and we've gotten rid of the rule of thumb.
Yeah, because you won't, you won't really a 13-month calendar. Every year we get August through the following August.
True.
Or 14th.
Either way.
You don't need the whole two years, is my point, is what you said.
Yeah, I just need the start date, yep.
It can happen either way. It can be a 13-month or it could be a, a full two-year calendar.
Well, years of contracts, you can't do two, four years.
No, correct, in the...
And every three years you have a contract, so it'd be a lot easier to do a 13- or 14-month contract.
Good point, yeah.
What did you do at Westchester?
Uh, pretty much what's happening right here. Almost, almost on the mark.
You know, I know it's a more complex formula than just simply starting after Labor Day, but I'm going to be voting against this because it just doesn't, and no disrespect intended, but it just doesn't feel logical to me. I like the end of the summer being Labor Day or kids coming back after that. And, and your, to your point about routine, it feels disruptive to me. Come in, establish a routine, back off from school, we're still kind of in summer. So for those reasons, even though they may not be sound, I'm going to vote no.
I, I actually was in your camp for a long time until you realized that we have a lot of kids that go to Penn State, and the Penn State summer session are a lot, you don't, I didn't realize it, I, I'm not saying you don't, but I didn't realize it until I got to the high school level, and they start their summer session in June.
Yes.
I didn't say stupid, did I? So, I, why they can't start in July, because schools end in June, but our, our buffer against that, we, we had a year, the year of all the snow, somebody else will remember better than I do, we almost, the kids weren't going to have to go to Penn State and start, they hadn't even graduated.
Yep.
So I, I was kind of in your camp, but it's like half-dones in a one, six of the other, so that, for me, I'll be voting for it, but I, philosophically, I do hear you.
Dr. Fraser, where Mr. Byler asked you, went to Westchester, I guess the other, while I'm not the world's biggest aficionado on sports, one of, one of the consequences is also what's going on with the other schools that we're with? Because one of the things that I'm concerned about is, you know, you know, we start the school year later, but the first game is before school starts, so it's kind of demoralizing for those people who are involved in that, and maybe it's a good thing, but I look at it as, in the high school level, the sports, the football team, the band, a number of the, I mean, Denise, you were a band parent, as I recall.
Yeah.
Yeah. Your kids were committed in August.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you know, so there's, there's a number of kids at the high school level who are strongly committed in August to activities already involving the school, so, you know, I, I mean, I'll vote for it, but I think it's something to consider too, which is we don't live on an island. And I know that could be the argument the other way, which says, yeah, those people might have to work at some recreation site through the end of August, but we're focused on the landmass around education, and that would include the other schools with, with which we deal.
Dr. Foster?
Yeah, so to, to Mr. Grub's point, I'd forgotten, I, I feel compelled to ask this. So MBIT, did we have a chance to coordinate with their calendar? Because that's been an ongoing effort where MBIT tries to work with the, the four sending districts and make sure as much as possible the calendars are coordinated, because it's very hard for them when one of the sending districts is, is open and the three others are closed, or two are open and two are closed, et cetera. So I, I just didn't know if you'd had a chance to kind of check in with that.
We had, I, I have not spoken with Ms. Strauss recently on this topic. We had two months ago, I would say, and as of that time, this is where we were.
Okay.
So she knew that.
That's fine. You have to keep checking in and checking in.
But again, that was, that was a couple months ago, so...
Any other comments before we take a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grub?
Yes.
Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Mr. Tate?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Thorwart?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mr. Byler?
No. Motion passes eight and one. Mr. Byler, could you read number three, please?
I move to award bid number 16015 Fujitsu, thank you for this, externus storage to Ash Technologies Incorporated at a cost not to exceed $14,325, subject to audit.
Second.
Anything for Mr. Fredrickson?
Just a question for a minute. Because it's changed over the years, I don't feel like those two now. You're buying, I believe it's 24 terabytes of, of data, of storage capacity here, though obviously some of that's backup and the... On a student account these days, how much data do they actually have storing? This comes from a difference where we used to give them the zip drive, which was 100 megabytes, and then we moved them to USB drives where they're gigs. What's a student account have these days?
It depends on the student, it depends on the level, and it depends on the program. We allocate between 500 and 750 meg for the students locally, but then they all, also have access to the Google Drive and the OneDrive from Microsoft, which provides them unlimited storage. Some of the projects nowadays, the multimedia projects, even CAD projects that some of the students at high schools are doing, their files are five, six, seven gigs in size. They're just huge, and that's a result of the software. This particular drive storage that we're buying is just for backup.
Okay. So we have a total, I think you want to, we have like 160 terabytes?
Uh, we have 150 terabytes that we use on a daily basis.
So this is really only a small portion of what we have? Thanks.
Other questions? Hearing no objections, I'd ask the secretary to record. The motion is passing with unanimous consent, and I would ask Mr. Tate, please, to read number four.
I move to approve policy number 312 Administrative Employees' Performance Assessment of Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent as contained in the attachments to this agenda.
Second. Any questions or comments?
I have a question. So this edit where it reads superintendent and if, as, and when appointed the assistant superintendent, is that a legalese that we put in there to, I, I think it was in response to my question perhaps?
That was my revision, following my interpretation of the board discussion, that there was some ambiguity as to the distinction between the assistant superintendent and superintendent, and the fact that the, the time that the board is considering passing the policy, it doesn't employ an assistant superintendent.
So I just, I just had a hard time with dissent, so it, what you're telling me is it's, that's your legal description and that's what we need to know.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your, the last piece of that. Yes, that's my verbiage.
Okay, that's fine. I'm okay.
And you are a, a practicing attorney in the state of Pennsylvania, so this, this has met some standards of the bar.
Well, I, I am a practicing attorney licensed in Pennsylvania, and, and I appined at the last meeting that I felt the policy was fine as it was written. There was some conversation about clarifying this point, which is what I tried to do here.
Then your practice is up, now you're good at it.
Well, I like to think so, Mr. Tate.
Wow.
Okay. Any, any other questions? Any other questions specific to the policy or comments? All right, hearing no objections, I'd ask the secretary to record. The motion is passing with unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Tate. Mr. Grub, can we...
Actually, I have a question on that. So I can never remember the things that we have to vote on, and so board policy, is it one of these things that's in the, in the category of things where we actually have to vote on? Sorry to...
Yes. The short answer is, is yes.
Apologies.
No, that's okay, but let me figure out exactly why I believe that and circle back.
Would you vote better if we...
Dr. Foster?
Just to...
No, unanimous consent is fine.
It's okay?
Yes, it's fine. Oh, oh, I see what you're saying.
That's fine.
Yes, policies have to be voted on, but whether it's by a roll call vote or a voice vote or unanimous consent does not matter.
Right. Now, we, in our policy, our policy may actually say, because we have this enumerated list of things we have to vote on in policy that maybe they don't comply with, but we're fine.
Yes, and, and the board can, without, as long as it's not violating the law, the board can violate its own policies by majority vote as well.
Well, that, that policy that you, that you speak of really is a reflection of the law and talks about the quantity and the numbers of the people who are on the board who have to vote for something. There's certain things that pass with majority, and there's certain things that require a supermajority to pass that require six or more board members to, to vote in the affirmative. Others can vote with a simple majority of five. It is always the question, which we will like to talk about one time, which is, is a majority of the board present or the majority of the seated board, including those who might not be present? Is it the majority of the quorum or the majority of the elected board? We'll come back to that. That's, let's, when you, when you give us the other answer, which is interesting, of do we have to vote? We'll talk about that too.
Very, very little board business can be conducted by a majority of a quorum that is not a majority of the full board. So for the vast majority of, of the school district's business, five votes is required, if not more.
Correct. Supermajority, thank you.
Are you gentlemen comfortable with how good he is now? Sounds like he's been practicing.
Since we've gotten into this discussion, I just would point out for the public's benefit that Mr. Cox works with a number of school districts, and that gives us the benefit of the practice at other districts, and it gives us some good context in a lot of our conversations.
I like to think I have a varied experience, so...
But we're your favorite.
Yes.
We're building your resume this evening.
Okay, Ms. Mr. Grub, can we take the last two together, please? Anybody having an objection?
No.
Okay.
So we can do the last two together? Oh my God. Everybody's good with them together?
Yep.
Yes.
No objections? Cool. I move to approve the independent services contract for the Council Rock South, North, High School North, and South Power Factor Correction Project to LPG Group Energy Consultants at a cost not to exceed $142,960, subject to audit. I further move to approve the energy optimization and reporting program proposal to Aramark Engineering as outlined on the attached proposal, subject to audit.
Second.
Can I change one question here, which is?
No.
We're, we're not going to, are we approving the proposal or are we approving the contract for the Aramark? Is it a contract or are we approving the proposal? Is it in terms that matters, Mr. Cox?
Um, bear with me for one second.
They made a proposal, and we are approving, approving the proposal or approving the contract?
You're, you're, you are approving, you're approving the independent service contract attached to the agenda.
Right, so that's what...
Yes, the, the agreement that's attached to the, to the agenda, which I, which I reviewed and made changes to, and, and they're included here.
But it's called a proposal in it.
Right, so we're, we're agreeing to the contract in the proposal as mentioned.
I don't see the contract in the proposal, I only see the proposal. Am I missing it?
Well, I'm...
You got a contract in the first piece and a proposal in the second piece.
Right, yes.
Okay.
We've got one of each.
The, the motion reads the way I, I would want it to read. It's referring to the contract.
I have a memo and a proposal.
I, I have an agreement on my screen here.
Well, then, maybe you just may vote.
One is for Aramark, well, one, I'm talking specifically about the Aramark one, which really...
Oh, no, that, that's just a proposal, and again, that's, I'm sorry, I misunderstood you, and that's at my suggestion as well. So...
Okay.
So the Aramark, when, when I reviewed the Aramark proposal, Mr. Taylor appropriately also sent me a long-form contract incorporating the proposal to review, and my advice to him was because the district is already under contract with Aramark and because the proposal contemplates that it would be in addition to that existing contract, a separate written agreement was not necessary. So with respect to the energy consultant contract, the board is considering approval of a written contract and the proposal with the Aramark piece just the proposal, and I feel that that distinction is appropriate in both instances, and reviewed that with Mr. Taylor.
And there is no reference in the Aramark proposal to the overarching agreement and date of that overarching agreement?
There is.
Is there?
Yes. And I, and I made a revision to that.
I, I see your handwriting, I just don't see the date, I don't see a reference to the date of the overarching agreement. So my count, my suggestion is...
Under the existing energy contract. So I suggested addition of, of the language and perform the services, so that it's not just talking about what...
Can we be clear? I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I'm not su- we're kind of going back.
I'm looking at the Aramark proposal.
Okay.
And it's, now he's referencing on page two, under the proposed program fees.
Yes, but...
Hang on, one at, one at a time, Mr. Grub.
I'm just giving you the reference that he's looking at. He's looking at the Aramark proposal.
I'm with, I'm there.
And it's on page two, under the section labeled proposed program fees. You'll see the blue handwritten note and performance services. All I was questioning was where the reference was within that to the exist, it says under the existing energy contract. All right, that's fine.
And that, and that was satisfactory to me, and then I also added language at the, at the end of the agreement.
I apologize. I'm used to seeing when you reference a contract, to reference the date of that contract so we know which contract we're talking about. That's, that was my point. Byler, anything else?
Rob, I was going to ask if these were your edits here, but...
They are.
Is that sufficient, just having the ink edit there, and then when the...
Yes.
The proposal is signed, it'll be included, you know, if, if your answer is yes, it's on time.
Yes, and, and I'm comfortable with the contract as it reads in particular because of the last addition, which is, which grants the district the ability to just get out of the, the services at any time on written notice to Aramark. In a lot of ways, I like this better because I like this kind of arrangement better because the district, all the district is really doing here is paying for services as it receives them and has the right to get out of it at any time. And so when you're a big institution like Council Rock is, paying for services as you get them with the right to walk at any time is about as secure as you can be, in my view.
So let me just follow one, follow up question. So we're going to sign this proposal, this permission to proceed is, proceed is signed by us, right?
Correct, and, and by the, by the vendor.
Okay.
Mr. Sutter has the, has the ability to bind that, that company.
So his signature above the permission to proceed is what's binding on this?
Correct.
So does, does Mr. Sutter need to go back and initial or anything, your handwritten changes, or how do you handle that? I'm just curious, because it's, it seems odd to me to just have handwritten changes.
Ideally, if Aramark would initial those changes, I'd prefer that, but it would be enforceable in my view either way because the, the district is saying, is basically making a counter offer, which Aramark then accepts once it starts performing.
I'll have them initial it, it's not a problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, because he's already signed it and then we've made changes, and if he doesn't sign it, couldn't it be argued that we made the changes without their knowledge?
No, it couldn't be enforced against the district without those changes because the district is approving a document that has them in it. It's, it's unenforceable against the district without those changes.
All right, thank you.
Any questions?
I've got one about the bigger ticket item. ROI, how long do you think pay off on that hundred forty-two thousand?
Less, less than two years.
Less than two years.
Less than two years.
That's a ten year program, correct?
Correct, and looking at about almost seven hundred thousand dollar savings in those ten years.
I'm sorry, could you speak up? How much?
Seven hundred thousand dollars over ten years.
Thank you, yeah, that's a nice big number, I want to hear it.
It's a good number.
And what I was leading for was this...
And the other question I have on that, Doug, as well as Mike started the line of questioning, I recall that either when we contemplated this previously or when we acted on it previously, there was also the ability to get a refund after one year if we found, this may have been only the introductory price or something, is there, is there a refund practice in this or?
He does have a one year, the ability after a year if you're dissatisfied. However, I will tell you, at Rolling Hills, we were anticipating three year payback and based on the review of the utility bills and, and where we are with that facility today, because we installed this there last year, we're looking at nineteen month payback, not three years. I think he's very conservative in his estimates, he doesn't want to be wrong, especially when he's guaranteeing this work.
And, and I asked the question, and Dr. Foster correctly, you know, was doing his research and had positioned me a, another discussion about this that said there were some more questions about it, and so hearing his input and, and reflecting upon the one year guarantee in terms of rebate, I appreciate the input, but I think that one year standing behind it, our personal experience is going to allow me to be comfortable.
Those are purely power savings, not the intangibles.
This, this does not include the additional savings for motors and things like that that we will extend the life of. So the seven hundred thousand dollars is pure energy savings.
That's pure energy.
Right, there are other variable frequency drives and other motors and components within our facilities that are also saved because they're not going to see the wanes and surges of power that you would see without this filtration. So it's a, a very good product for us to install, and there's other places for this to still work for us, we're, we're kind of doing this in steps. We'll put it on a larger building now and, and see this return and, and I believe we will see it, and if we do, then I'll be back to you for more buildings and more potential savings.
So when, when we buy power, do we get charged if we have a low power factor? Is there a penalty? Or is this based only on the kilowatt hours that we're purchasing as the basis of the savings?
This is based on...
It's not avoiding penalties?
Right, this is based on power use within that facility. Power from the grid has to come out of the certain ninety-eight percent, whatever that, whatever that percentage is, when it gets to us down the road, there isn't necessarily a requirement by the utility provider to meet that same requirements that comes out of the plant. So what we get sometimes is what we get, and some facilities are fine, others not so much, and we've evaluated all the facilities, the two high schools are, are great opportunities for savings. We tested this at Rolling Hills because it was one of the least expensive facilities to put the equipment in to see how it worked out. In the year that it's been there, we have not lost a single motor, which we would have lost in the past, at least one a year, which is a five, five thousand dollar cost. So we're seeing, you know, a good example at Rolling Hills, so I think we're going to, you know, be in a good spot doing this at the high schools.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor, good work. Any other questions? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. McKessy?
Yes.
Mr. Tate?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Thorwart?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mr. Beilich?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grubbs?
Yes. Motion passes nine zero. Mr. Cox, solicitor's report, please.
There will be an executive session, I understand, following the meeting on a confidential student matter. Dr. Foster, section five oh eight of the school code is the section of the school code that requires a majority vote in, on many issues. It does not list adoption of school district policies, however.
Thank you.
I quickly looked at policy zero zero nine, which is the board policy on policies, and it doesn't speak to the vote required, at least that I can see here on first blush. So I think...
You know, it's zero zero six that enumerates a bunch of stuff that, you know, whether it needs to be a majority or, and, and I can't remember, maybe somewhere on zero zero six somewhere that there are some votes that, that have to be voice votes, and, and I just have to keep looking, I, I can't remember where that is.
So absent some requirement in board policy requiring some particular vote, the board could probably pass policies just by a simple majority of a quorum, even if that quorum is less than a majority. But you'll correct me if I'm wrong when you review zero zero six. But, but in any event, the school code doesn't require any particular vote.
In November two thousand twelve, under section eight, the board changed it at the time in the thought, not that we would discuss it tonight, but that it would speed up the board meetings to give the board president discretion to call for a unanimous vote, provided that there is, that a single dissent from a board member made at or prior to the president's call for unanimous consent will cause the president to ask the board secretary to conduct a roll call. So that's the...
Okay, so I just made remember prior to that change, that's all. Thanks.
That's all I have, Mr. Block.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Okay, I'll move to old business, any old business from the board? Is there any new business from the board?
I got a couple of things.
Okay, Dr. Foster?
Okay, so one thing is, and I, I've been talking about this for a few years with Mr. Reinhardt, and I'd like to ask if the finance committee could fit it into their schedule, to reach out to Keystone, and, and the issue is, folks that moved to this district, we've got some, some strange taxes here that some of us, when, for instance, I moved here from, from Wilmington years and years ago, believe it or not, we didn't have an occupation tax, and, and the local in, income tax was automatically collected out of your paycheck. So anyway, folks that move here, I, I, I know we get complaints when they learn after two, three, four years that they have not been paying the tax because they prepare their own taxes, and it's a rude awakening because now they have back taxes, interest and penalties. It's, it's ugly and they get angry. I think Mr. Reinhardt may have heard some phone calls from them from time to time, and it's, they're very frustrated. So can Keystone help us? Do they have the databases of, of people paying taxes like EIT, and do they have the legal right to cross compare if we give lists of names? And they can look for folks that may have dropped off the radar screen and give them a friendly early reminder instead of accumulating pain and suffering? So that's, that's the first thing that I wanted to, to ask, if we could just ask if they can do that.
Back before Act thirty-two, which is what consolidated all of the EIT collections, I think there is more freedom of exchanging information between the school district and the EIT collector. Since then, there's been more privacy issues in the taxpayer bill of rights and things like that, so I'd really want the solicitor to be able to review that to say, can we share that personal information between the EIT collector and the school district? So that would be a legal question that I would just caution, Rob, to make sure he looks at Act thirty-two and what changed, because I know there are some privacy issues that changed from Act thirty-two.
Bob, on that, on that topic, what are you doing next? Would it not be prudent for us to consider creating a brochure? For many people buy homes, most often they do, quite often in this area, they find a realtor involved or a real estate agent involved, and my question is, wouldn't a simple threefold brochure that says, welcome to Council Rock, I hate to put it this way, your tax liability discussion, you know, tax liability information within, and let that, let that memo, give it to realtors, I'm not trying, it would not be, there's no legal responsibility for them to communicate it, but once the house is going to closing, these people often go to closings, they want to see the transaction completed, among the many things they can give them would include the tax liabilities, the homestead rebate exemption, exemption for, to reply for, and then a number of these things so that people would know, because I hear your point, Bill, and you're right, you live here from out of state, you, why would you know? But had someone given you a form, particularly if you have children in the school, you didn't at the time, if you have children in school, you'd probably look at that because as most real estate ads for school, for homes in our district say, part of the Council Rock school district, you're buying it, you'd probably want to read that brochure as you came in. So can we look to that, there's no legal obligation there, but I think it's a, it's a courtesy, it doesn't absolve anyone of responsibility, but it helps to potentially mitigate the occurrence.
I, I appreciate where you're coming from, having heard some, some frustration with this, but, you know, I, I would rather than see the, the school district take this on completely, I mean, we have paid tax collectors that we might be able to collaborate who are responsible to some extent for that, it'd be interesting to understand what and how they do and perhaps see if, if there's a way to, to work together with them, just a, just a thought to include the entire process.
It eats up, my, my consideration here is, these appeals eat up time of Gail and Bob and ultimately us, you know, and potentially in some instances, our council, you know, two or three hundred bucks spent to put together a one page brochure, it's a good, it's a good headway. I appreciate the tax collectors, but at the end of the day, the tax collectors say, Council Rock, go deal with that. And there are...
There's all kinds of issues with this, and I would have no problem putting something together, having our solicitor review it with me. Tax collectors, and this was a recent problem that occurred, a person moved in from New Jersey, was employed in New Jersey, never had the EIT collected by their employer because their employer isn't responsible when you're in New Jersey, real estate agent never told them about the earned income tax. They did go to their local tax collector and the local tax collector said, oh yeah, I collect the real estate tax, the per capita tax and the occupation tax, but never mentioned the earned income tax. Two years later, when an audit came through, when they matched up the records to Pennsylvania, now they have a tax bill with penalties and interest because they weren't aware of the tax. So this is not just a school district issue, it's also a municipality issue because they share in the tax with us, and they may have a tax that we're not aware of. They may have trash fees and things such as that, so that's why I'm a little concerned about us putting out, this is all the taxes, I'd rather say school district taxes, but check with your municipality and your county, because there could be other taxes depending on what the situation is, but I'd be happy to put something like that together, put it on our website and...
Well, I think it would be more efficient for taxpayers in general if we collaborated through the, the tax collectors, potentially is that link of those different things, I just think it makes sense, that's my own personal...
Well, then, Gabby, and I just wanted to, to clarify my thinking on, on your suggestion, that the tax collectors, they, their focus is the real estate taxes by law, and, and these other taxes are, they may or may not collect them. And also, when you look at our tax collectors for real estate, they do a great job, extremely efficient, but they don't have giant databases and computer systems to cross compare, it's not their expertise, in, in my opinion, but some, some entity like Keystone, I mean, dealing with ten thousand people or fifty thousand, it's, it's, it's no big deal for them, they, they have the databases to do it and the folks to do the cross comparison, so that's, that's all.
I would say we'll put it on the finance committee agenda for, after we get past this budget season.
Okay, Dr. Foster, was that all you had?
Yeah, there's one more thing. So on the middle school projects, you know, we're, we've had the prebid, we've had the prebid meetings and folks are busily out there creating bids and, and it's going to be incredibly competitive, I hope, and we're going to get some great bids. But before we vote on accepting those bids, because that's really the point of no return, I, I just want to be clear in my own mind, and if we could have a discussion item at another board meeting or a small work session, and it need not be complicated, but I want to make sure that I, I personally, prior to voting on it, want to have a sense of the board, that there's some scenario going forward or a couple of scenarios where it's pretty clear that there is enough comfort from enough people on the board that we could imagine sending areas for two middle schools that makes sense. So Robert, Dr. Frazier, when he presented to us, whenever that was, and they put on the, the website, the, that, that presentation, you know, all these scenarios, the scenario one A, the one B, the two A and the two B. So in, in scenario one A, there's no change in, in sending patterns for, for, for any of the elementary schools or closures or whatever, and there, you open these two middle schools, one at ninety-six percent and one at seventy-eight percent, and then in, in scenario one B, you move Richborough Elementary from the south to the north, and you end up opening the middle schools at ninety-two percent or eighty-two, in eighty-two percent capacity. Now, if, if we had a brief discussion and, and I could tell with certainty that nobody, no way, no how would support moving Richborough, or that there was no acceptance whatsoever of a school opening at ninety-six percent, I would suddenly start thinking, like the commercial where people's heads blow up and there's the purple mist, I don't know if you've seen that, it's pretty funny, but that I would suddenly get very concerned that there may not be a path forward to go from a three middle school system to a two middle school system, and I would get real cold feet about voting for these projects. So I just wanted to have a brief discussion at some point in the, before these bids are voted on, that was what my request was.
Can I, can I just talk about that schedule real quick so you understand the timeline? We receive bids for the Newtown Middle School in advance of Holland, and then Holland bids are received on the twenty-second of March. We'll prepare the bid recommendations and review the bids for both projects with the board at the thirty-first March Facilities Committee meeting, and then be looking for board action on the seven April board meeting. So there's short time between when we review them at facilities and when the next board action is required. So that, that's the game plan so that we can meet the timelines that are established in the documents for commencement of construction.
But we'd be able to have the conversation that Dr. Foster is, is asking at that committee meeting, right?
Absolutely. So, so, just so I'm clear from a preparation standpoint, both for Mr. Taylor and myself, Dr. Foster, as you just referenced, and I, I have these up now in front of me, scenario one A, as you said, is a ninety-six percent, seventy-eight percent split, scenario one B is a ninety-two percent to eighty-two percent split, and then the other scenarios go from there, but they, they tend to have some, some differential from one middle school to, to the other middle school. In, in my eyes, those two scenarios more or less represent the status quo in terms of number of elementary schools, right? Those, those both maintain all ten of our elementary schools, then when we get in the twos, the threes and the fours, back from that December presentation, that's, that's when we start talking about consolidation. So, so what is it that you would like to see?
So, so for me... So, so for me, knowing that, that, so, one thing we know that, that is, is easy to do is to stay status quo, even, even if it doesn't make sense financially, but it's physically possible to continue to run the districts with elementary schools we have. But are you, as an educational leader, okay opening up a middle school at 96 percent, or do you just say, I, I can't do that? So that would be, you know, are you okay with 1A and 1B? And then from enough of my, my colleagues on the board, I personally would want to hear, you know what, I could live with 1A or 1B, you know, I may be working for something better, but, you know, worst-case scenario, there's something that, that I could commit to that would actually lead to going to a two-middle-school system, because the scenario I don't want, and, and Mr. Bylick raised it at a prior meeting, I don't want us to build a new middle school, renovate a middle school, and somehow find ourselves for years into the future, running three middle schools. That will make me go cuckoo. And, and so before I vote on this, I just want to know that you're okay, that, that within these possibilities that you've already enumerated, that you could live with these, and that there's enough people on the board that can live with that. I don't know that, that any of this will please Mr. Bylick, but it's a step somewhat in his direction.
Sure, sure. I think that, that from a livability standpoint, and, and we'll get into this at our, at our next Facilities Committee meeting, but yes, I think the answer we can say now is yes, we can live with any of these scenarios, or at least, at least some of these scenarios. We have multiple scenarios here, 1A and 1B included, that, that certainly can be on the table for discussion. From a capacity standpoint, do they work, does the math work, can we make the sites work, or are we building these schools appropriately for these numbers? Sure we are. The question is an extension of that, in my opinion, and that is one of, is it the best decision? Is it the best way of doing it? And, and that is, is a decision that, as we know from a capital planning standpoint, is, is much bigger, much broader, and thus much more time-consuming than what we're going to be able to answer, and, and we all know that, and we have known that, than, than before the timeline that Doug just laid out for the vote that's going to come before us. But, but I think that we can, we can dig further into these numbers and, and probably put, put some, some minds at ease around, around what might be concerning.
I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Dr. Foster, is that all you have?
Yeah, for, for new business.
Is there, Mr. Grub, new business? It's, it's a minor point. I, I often go through the check register at, at a rather annoying level of detail, and annoying mostly to Bob, but he's, but he's a trooper, but he's a trooper. So I wanted to ask one request, and before I impose on Bob, I wanted to get the consent of the board. I don't believe it's a lot of work. It would help me in my analysis of what we're doing if, if I could get that same report we get on a monthly basis, but actually to have it go back 12 months or even more. What I'm looking for is to understand, we enter into certain agreements, and while I don't believe it exists, it's one of those things that always needles into my mind, which is, have we had occasion where we've split contracts to buy at a sub, sub contract obligation to contract, to buy at a level which would be sub that on individual POs, but then tally to a total? I don't know that we have, I don't think anybody's doing it overtly, but it's something that I would like to look at, and it's, it's one of those detailed, big data things that I would like to look at. And so I'm just asking if anybody on the board has an objection, short of my having to try and build it from all the individual monthly reports we get, to get that summary going back 12 months, it's the same detail we get at the check register now. And what I'm trying to understand, I will tell by example, that about 10, 12 years ago, we put contracts of about $36,000 a year with a locksmith, and we never bid it, and it was done piece by piece. It was not done, I don't believe it was done intentionally, but it was something to be revealed. So I just want to ask if anybody on the board would have an objection to, to Bob investing, I look to Bob, and I, I don't want to tax you with a four-hour indebted to this, but how long would it, is it?
I could have it done in 20 minutes, so it's not, it's taking me long at all, it's just that me getting a file that big might be more difficult, go over the internet.
Matt, Matt will help you with that, through Board Docs, it's not just, no, Matt will not help you with that. Because it's not just for me, it would be a board asset, so it would actually be available to all board members from Board Docs.
It won't take me long at all to do that.
Anybody object to that? So, here. All right, terrific, thanks, Mr. Grub. Any other new business? Okay, let's move to the committee reports, Ms. Brooks, academic standards.
Just a reminder that next month, we're not following our standard scheduling. We will not be meeting prior to the first board meeting of the month. Our meeting will be on Monday, March 14th, in conjunction with the Superintendent's Parent Advisory Committee Group. That is the session where we break off into elementary and secondary panels, where a variety of staff members are available, it's an open forum of discussion, it really is a great opportunity to hear what is on the minds of parents in the schools now, and it's a, it's a great meeting. That will be on Monday, March 14th at 7:30.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Mr. Grub, facilities? Please come back to me in a second, I have to find something.
Ms. Thomas, finance.
Yes, our meeting is next week, correct? And one other note on the academic standards, Dr. Foster and I will probably be a little bit late, we have MB, MBIT that night, so, just FYI, we'll go to that, I guess, and then come over. But just so you know, no problem.
Ms. Grub? We had had a meeting scheduled for the facilities meeting, and last, past couple days, and we deferred that meeting, and I, I wanted to take this opportunity to express to Mr. Taylor on behalf of the board, our sympathies for you and your family with passing your father. And we are, we are sorry that you have to go through that, and, and wish the best and continuing health to your family, your mother, and everyone involved. In light of that, we are going to reschedule that meeting to March 3rd, standard time across the hall.
6:00.
6:00 PM, we're going to do it a little earlier, March 3rd across the hall, and we'll be talking, as I spoke about last time, we'll be talking about a few things regarding Northampton. We have some interaction with Northampton around such things as the building of the Holland Middle School, some requests about a possible easement on the Welch property to create a parking area to allow them to access the property, and a few...
The architects will be doing, reviewing the models of each of the two buildings as well.
So that's why it's starting at 6:00, it may run, it is a board meeting night, it is a normal board meeting night, that meeting will have to end around 7:20, 7:25. So if you're going to come for this meeting, come early and enjoy a little more. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Grub. I'm going to give tonight's policy committee update, as you recall, in our December meeting, at the appointments, I appointed a committee of four. Tonight, I'm going to change that appointment and appoint Ed Tate as the chair of the policy committee, so thank you and congratulations, Mr. Tate. And do you have anything?
I would have done for my lady.
Chair of the society. No, we're going to dive into it.
Excellent.
We've already started.
Good deal. Doc Foster and Ms. Thomas, anything from MBIT, other than we know you have a meeting coming up.
Okay. So we discussed the preliminary budget, so it is just preliminary, hold on to your chairs. So the, the share, there is an increase in the budget, the share for Council Rock is about $100,000. About a third of that is an adjustment for, for an increase in the number of children. There's this, this process of apportioning and rolling averages and looking back, and anyway, so about a third of that, 100,000, is an increase in the number of children we're sending to MBIT, which is good, which, which is good news. Two-thirds is, is, is the increase in the budget itself, and, and of that, about a half of it is piecers, and a half is salary increases, so that's, that's the likely news for Council Rock, not material to our, our whole budget discussion. We also discussed fund balances, you recall in the past, there were concerns about the higher cost of borrowing of MBIT versus the sending districts, because they don't have taxing authority. The articles, we had a brief discussion about the articles of incorporation of MBIT, they're limited under those articles to the, like, 5% of, of the, of the budget for a fund balance. They don't have any ability to have the, the kinds of fund accounting that we have, where you have designated fund balances that you can accumulate for big liabilities. So for instance, there's a roof liability that is somewhere around $9 million, well, that's the, like, the entirety of their budget, and so there's going to be a discussion in the future about whether we should think about amending that art, those articles of incorporation, or whatever they're called, and to allow for larger fund balances for, for specific uses if, if the districts want it, so that's what I recall. Do you have anything else?
I don't, I forgot something on finance.
Okay.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
So I apologize, I had referenced earlier doing something, because it was budget season, to add it to the finance calendar, but didn't tell you what was on the agenda for next week. So the agenda is the Champions Contract, audited financial statements, and a review of the capital assessment appraisal services. So those are three things we'll send out the agenda for next week. The budget is not really on the agenda for next week, but it is what Mr. Reinhardt's been working towards, correct?
Yes.
Ms. McKessy, anything from the IU?
No, I was very regretfully and unexpectedly waylaid at work the day of the last meeting.
Mr. Bylick, other than the wonderful donation today, anything else at fundraiser?
No, I think Ms. Scarpahit all the important points regarding my Carlo night, we haven't had a meeting since my last report, so I think we're good.
Excellent. I'll move to our second round of public comment.
Certain people don't have mics in front of them, the solicitor doesn't have a mic in front of them.
I do.
You do?
Yes, ma'am.
You were hard to hear, Bill, you have a mic, I couldn't see it from where I was sitting, but the mics that the children use, the students use were excellent for the singing tonight. So once again, even though there's not a lot of people in the room, I'm able to hear because they've given me a device, but it's something that you really have to improve on. What I would like to know is, what is the cost per student at the schools where we have made great changes in this budget year? So at Newtown Elementary, where the cost per student was one of the best, and we filled up the school, has that changed it or not? At Wrightstown, where we took students out, and we still have the same overhead cost, what is the cost of students, per student at that school? At Holland Elementary, where we put even more special education students who have a higher cost per student because they are special education, what is the cost per student for that school? If you want to say that you're running your schools efficiently, then you have to know what those numbers are. And lastly, if you're going to get to scenario 1A, 1B, 1-2, whatever you decide on, I think if the primary discussion is where is Richborough Elementary School going to the middle school, then you ought to let that school contingency know, who may not watch this meeting or know when that discussion is going to take place, when that discussion is going to take place. And I believe, I don't like to speak for anybody on the board, but there is a board member who said that he would not vote for these projects unless he knew who was going where, and I think that is a legitimate concern for them, and probably a process that should be attacked before we break ground. Who is going to go to those schools? And I don't think that waiting over a month to have this discussion, and then the vote on the bids, just a couple days later, is going to give you enough time to have it, and, and for five of you to be on a relatively same page, or relatively, I'm okay with A or B, or whatever happens in that school year, or whatever. But this is a very important discussion to a very small aspect of this community, because they may be switched, and it also decides whether the school, high school populations are going to become more even or not, so it's important, thank you very much.
Thanks, Nancy. Any other further public comment? Any last board comment?
Yes, we forgot something, I don't know that we did, I apologize if I missed it. I wanted to thank Holland Middle School.
Yes.
You remember to do that? We did do that.
No.
We thanked them, but why don't you tell everybody what they did?
Sorry, thank you.
That was great.
And I am going to look for Dr. Fraser's support for the teaching staff names who were there, but we were fortunate enough to have a reception, they, they do it each year. Holland Middle School has an opportunity for us to meet with their student government leadership, they bring some raps, and we sit in the other room across, and we talk for about an hour about what goes into a school, other than children, and it's, it's quite good. Mr. Greenland was there, Mrs. Kaplan was not there, although she most often is, she is otherwise engaged today, I think she is the student government lead, and the other teacher, right, Burke, right?
Burkett.
Burkett, Ms. Burkett, Burkett was there with them tonight. Just to make you aware, as they were leaving, there were politicians in that room, one of the young students asked me how the board would feel about supporting their efforts to save the pandas in the, the pandas in the red forest, or something, there's, there's something, they're looking to reduce the amount of paper that's wasted in the school district, not a bad plan. I invited him to speak today, and he panicked, and he will be here, and he will come, he promised me, at our next, or the one after that, meeting to update us, he'll provide Matt one or two slides, so that we'll have an understanding of what they're trying to save, and I look forward to having the opportunity to have him present that.
I will share that I asked them, I said, so you know we're renovating the school, they're seventh and eighth graders, they won't be there, well, it, you know, if and when we renovate schools. I said, so if you had, what would be your number one thing that you would want to see? So they said they want to audit, they want the auditorium to stage, of course. Number two was wider stairwells. I said, wait a second, guys, you have the widest stairs out of the cafeteria into the gym that exist in the whole district. They're like, no, the stairwells, and quieter walls. Those were their three things, so they couldn't hear.
Don't forget lockers.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, you're right, they did say, they did say, bigger lockers, they did say bigger lockers.
They can't wear their coats, because they can't fit them in with all the books.
It was very interesting.
This was actually our problem with North, if you must know, that when we...
The locker size?
The lockers were not size sufficient to fit both students and, and coats. Students long...
And, and for all of you out there on Twitterverse, be on the lookout for these pandas, because I got lured into following two different Twitter accounts that are based on two different social studies classes this evening, so more, more to come on that, so...
It's great to see that.
It's fantastic, it's wonderful, we have to see.
Very nice of them, more important than, than the raps is, is the getting a chance to sit and speak.
Yeah, absolutely.
The last thing I just want to comment on, there was some confusion, I had posted something on my personal webpage, there was a, children have often write to us in February about Board Director Month, and I had written about the winner in my mind, there's no competition, but the one that I noted was the student who thanked us for all we do, and her final comment was, and thank you for wasting your time to do it. So there really is no competition, but it certainly is a political making there.
Dr. Foster?
Yeah, so I do, I, you know, I, I wish we could flip them, because mine's a little more, less fun. So it is budget season, so I, I wanted to just talk really briefly, I've written some numbers down, but, you know, we... I've written some numbers down, but, you know, we talk about fund balance a lot, and rightly so, but Mr. Reinhardt had sent out a spreadsheet that we've all looked at that gave some of the history of fund balances, and Mr. Grub added some information about tax increases or Act I limits to it. And so, it looked like from that spreadsheet and from some audits and asking Mr. Reinhardt some questions, this is some of the history of the fund balance. So, in 2008 and '09, we had a fund balance of $14 million, which is about what I think many of us think is what we should have, is an ongoing concern around that. And then, in budget years 2008, '09 through 2010, '11, there was $8.7 million added for Piersers, and that was a bit chaotic because Harrisburg was saying the contribution rate was going to be here, and we were budgeting for that, and then they lowered it. And so, but anyway, we ended up on purpose putting $8.7 million for Piersers in there. But then, there were a bunch of accidental things that occurred. So, the Melsky sale, $4.1 million was moved in to the reserve. There was a real estate settlement last year, $3 million was moved in, and then there were three years of earned income tax upside surprises. There was a .8 million upside surprise in 1112, 1.6 million in 1112 to 1213, 1.4 million 1213 to 1314. So, anyway, you add up these events and what we started with, and you end up with that we had $19.6 million of new stuff, both purposeful and lucky accidents getting us to around the $30 million we are today. If you look at the original, 14 is on purpose, and the 8.7 million is on purpose, 75% of our fund balance was basically premeditated. It's what we intended to do. There was 25% that were these lucky accidents that I don't think any of us think will ever happen again. I mean, certainly EIT isn't going up this year, and Melsky is unlikely to repeat. So, and then when you look at the $30 million, that sounds like a really robust balance, but if you look at just two budget years, this one we're in and next year, as far as I can tell, there's $4 million of Piersers that's added in, that's reoccurring costs. Healthcare, I think, went up $2 million last year, and this year, this next budget year, it looks, as far as I've heard, about $3 million in debt movements and salaries increases. So, you add that up over two years, $9 million of reoccurring costs that we haven't covered yet. We haven't covered it. So, $30 million, when you want to keep about $14 million of that in reserve versus $9 million uncovered every year from now forward, it's, to me, it's a little scary, and I think that we basically know what our options are, and none of them are easy. We have to raise taxes on ourselves or our neighbors, which is painful. We have to reduce the operating costs of the district by closing schools or redistricting, or we have to close programs, or we have to do a little bit of all of those. All roads lead to pain, unfortunately, and I think that this budget season is really important for us, and will be difficult, but Mr. Reinhardt will help us, and I'm sure we'll talk our way through. So, that's, anyway, some of the history of the fund balance. It's surprising to me that so much of it actually was intentional, you know?
Any other board comment? Okay, meeting adjourned.
See you, everybody next door.